A P M the silent engine.
Konaka, 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 konaka.
The things behind the scene and the enemies of Biafra says the result in the landlight. We salute you, we appreciate all you do and you're welcome to Aludo, Aludo Kueno.
Yeah.
Aludo Kueno.
Oh.
Aludo Kueno.
Oh.
Aludo Kueno.
Yeah.
Yeah, mobile to you, unmute yourself, sir, and take the stage, A P M.
There were Honorable Minister of Information, please accept my apology, it's just from one thing to another, from meeting to meeting. But no matter what happened, we must be here, now we there, is that correct?
Yes, so now we there.
Yes, so thank you all, thank you, thank you, fellow citizens of Aludun, thank you very much. Thank you for your steadfastness, your resilience and all genuine freedom fighters, thank you from here and there. And I must recommend Aludun, I believe this is the fourth or fifth town hall meeting this year, correct?
Seventh.
Seven, alright, Aludun at least, all other states, have to copy this example, please. And our town hall meeting is where we gather to discuss the issue of Biafra, where we also have the privilege to answer some question. And at the same time, it's gathering of brothers, you know, and especially now that we are in critical time, we all need each other back. We all, we always want to gather like this and this is one of, this is how the church leaders able to manipulate and use their followers. Because they engage them from week to week, you will be surprised as some church, they have service six days a week, seven days a week, five days a week. Do you know the reason why? They occupy everything about you, they cage you. You will find some gathering that, you will find some churches on Monday, after Sunday service, Monday would be a book study. Tuesday, they will name it something else, Wednesday will be maybe people that want to get married or whatever, single for, single worshiping, a single uh uh brothers and sisters, then Thursday, then Friday probably going to be night vision, before you know, all your week, we will walk around the activity of that congregation and by so doing, this church, we, you know, they will blend together and know each other. So, and our town hall meeting, why I use that as a case study, our town hall meeting, the more we meet, the more we share our views, the more we know how we are doing, how to move forward, how each state is doing, it's really encouraging, please, other states need to copy. Because now we really need to check, every, checkmate everyone, to know those that stay with us and those that are not with us and those that are falling apart and it's really important. Like yesterday, we have our fundraising and today again we got, so this is gatherings of brothers and sisters, especially this time. Thank you all, our leaders before us, we always remember them and we appreciate everything they have done for us, our leader Juku and our leader Philip Fefion, we appreciate their sacrifice because they really open our eyes. So that the agenda of Osman and Fodion from eighteen oh four, our leaders open our eyes so that to, you know, saw the agenda of the Fulani, their grandmaster, Osman will not be able to, so they won't be able to carry out the agenda, that is to Islamize us, take over our, our land or kill us or, or chase us to Lagoon or chase us to Amazonia, even if Amazonia we allow us in, talk less of Cameroon. Amazonia, on the other side, we all know they are fighting for their own survival and the Dudua Republic, we can't go around there. Is it in not, where they are killing us, back over hundred years now, our people will be running, head us, scatter from north. So we appreciate our leader, Ojuku and Philip Fefion, that show us the way, what to do. And also, Wasuke, those that Wasuke saw that, because he was sabotaged, but he could have, you know, stand as a man and fight to the end. I don't know what going on with him, if he really true genuine freedom fighter, no matter what by now, after over ten fifteen years, he's supposed to have made a U-turn and embrace the freedom that he believed in once upon a time. But since he haven't done that, we know the agreement he have with the terrorist country called Nigeria. Wasuke, if you are listening, wherever you are, shame unto you for now, you know, we are so disappointed in you, you are not a true genuine freedom fighter. A true genuine freedom fighter and never saw that, no matter what, no matter the pressure, no retreat, no surrender. If you can't fight from the homeland, fight from Gaza, that's what Wasuke is supposed to do, but shame unto him upon the mistakes, everything he have gone through, he actually fought against our leader Mazin Nndikan. Wasuke make a U-turn, do what is right and apologize to Biafra people, come back on board, if you are true born Biafra, if you not, eh bo nyar, ni birebeke. Our leader Mazin Nndikan, we appreciate him, just like I just mentioned and talked about Wasuke. If Wasuke had been our leader, if our leader had been Wasuke, who surrendered? But Wasuke, once he heard, oh, all the old commanders, he just say hands up and collect money, actually, he's a criminal, if not, he will not even accept that money. Because once they release him, he start building hotel everywhere, that guy is scammer. You know, I will not forgive him until he do what is right and come and apologize to Biafrans and fight the fight that he start from Mazo. A true soldier, a true freedom fighter, never sabotages people, what he did is a sabotage, that's why, why we keep calling his name lately? Because he resurrected the movement, that is the credit we are giving him because he resurrected the movement after the genocide war. And our leader Mazin Nndikan, what we are doing is what we free. If we depend on that failed, shit hole country called Nigeria, we only be by miracle for them to release him. So our activity, our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Eban always say, our activity is what we release our leader Mazin Nndikan. Just like the testimony that was submitted to Oman right, Congressional Congress, just a few weeks ago. That exposes Nigeria more, that exposes the atrocity Nigeria have committed towards the Biafra people. Who would destroy Nigeria from Washington here, because so far, last time I check, last time we Biafra check, United States of America still remain the leader of the free world. They are still the boss, whether you like it or not, whether Russia like it or not, whether China like it or not, they are on top, they are at time. So, and we respect their leadership, we always pray that they will do the right thing and we believe that they will not fall too cheap to support a terrorist country, because if they do, that means they don't practice what they preach and know how the system work and remember America, they are Maradona as well, they know how to play the politicking or political game that we do. So, please, we still have high hope coming from Washington DC and I also want to use this opportunity to let Biafra know that very soon we have a more serious meeting and engagement we'll be having in Washington, you know, not everything will be on social media, but anything, any, whatever that will be for public consumption or for Biafra people to know about, we because it one, the sabotage is too much, we have enemy that surrender us front and back, so we are trading with caution, so we have to be careful. And, you know, we appreciate so far, the period that United States of America have taken to let Nigeria know that they will be heard accountable. Yeah, for now, you know, I don't think that Nigeria have more say in United States of America here. So very soon we'll be having more, more engagement that we Biafra will be happy to hear the outcome. It's cooking, but the Nigerian terrorists, they cannot smell what we are cooking, but we Biafrans can smell it. Uh, we can smell it, Biafra is here, I always use that word, Biafra is here, because my spirit is so high, seeing what is going on, seeing the the result from Washington DC, I'm, you know, positively happy about how everything is going. Uh, for what happened in Finland, that's opposed to us also. Also, you know, help us to wiseen up, to know that if what we are doing is not effective, why do you think the EU collaborated or colluded with Finland and Nigeria to call our Prime Minister for so called question? Ask yourself, since our leader Mazin Nndikan was kidnapped from Kenya, have you hear any news or from anywhere that Chinasa Wul, the Nigerian government have put bomb tea on his head or they are looking for him? Or even I believe Chinasa live in Kuwait or somewhere, have any news that these people are, like if they are threat to Nigeria? They always travel to Nigeria every time, so that tells you that, they are nobody, that tells you that they are working with the Nigerian terrorist state. And what about, uh, what is this other useless man that live in, yeah, this fool calling Mamadili in Switzerland, what is his name again? And you know this post like this, you easily forget about their name because they are not, they are just nobody. Uh, Chike Dusey, do travel to Nigeria, why haven't he be arrested? Or have you ever heard or hear that they are looking for Chike Dusey? That tells you that these people, they are not fighting for Biafra. So, two grandmasters that they are holding right now, our leader Mazin Nndikan, because he's genuinely fighting for his people's freedom. That is why he was kidnapped, he was not kidnapped so that they would treat him like king. They kidnapped him to stop the freedom that he's fighting for, to stop this great cause. That is the reason why they kidnapping and they call our Prime Minister for so called question, to stop our redeclaration and to also stop our, our freedom. So that will tell you who is on the right path, so we always want to be careful and trade with caution. And for the propaganda that was going flying this week about the arm proposal that Nigeria submit to United States, you can, any country can approach United States, say they need, they want to buy arm from them. Then they will, they will take your paperwork or we acknowledge it, that don't mean that they approve it, there is a process. A lot of country, when they do something like that, they are denying. So Nigeria now, uh, uh, US now will try to look into this terrorist country called Nigeria case and see if they will sell their arms to Nigeria or not. Congress will block it, so, and, uh, but this grace of Chukupika, our God, we have our lobby, you know, they are familiar with Washington and the game and the politics, how he played. And Jim Moran, he served in US Congress for over twenty-four years, that's a long time, he a good guy. So, uh, we'll do everything possible to block this arms sale. So Nigeria will know that Biafra Republic government in Gaza is stepping up the game, they can't bully us. So whatever they, they thinking that, any relationship, that their relationship with America would be so strong like before, whatever, it's not going to happen, so please just keep doing what you are doing, like keep fighting, you know, we appreciate everyone, we are the night hour. We are very, very, very close, I know what I'm talking about, very close. Even when I spoke with our Prime Minister yesterday morning, yeah, Saturday, yeah, so, you know, he, actually, he, he, he put it that where, where he is now, he is in school, so he's learning a lot. After he concluded, he was saying, Gagabakona history, yes, he say he is in school, so he, he learn more, you know, he got to know more. And with this period of time, all the sub, all the suburbs just exposed, you know, all of them, these are the same people that said that Prime Minister cannot talk to me, he's angry with me, Kai who come? Uh, so he come, yeah, so, uh, not everything I will say, but I'll tell you that we are the right part. And if you look at the other side, all they do is to lie, they are not, they say something today, tomorrow they doing something else. After everything, how they tried to bring me down, I Mazyogichukunkere, and they, I don't know, they believe they made me who I am, they did not. If I did not accept the A P M, who among them? Is he, is he a Mamadabu that hardly bring his face, that even don't want to show his face on media? Is he a Mamadabu that is so scared? Is he a Mamadabu that lies, lie Muhammad of Sabotwa? Or is it, uh, the Tambor woman called Chioma? That manipulate, that will like to sit you for two, three hours to make sure you, you know, dominate you, try to control you? Or is it, Joy Yerobe, while we are in Finland, Joy Yerobe came to me putting pressure, that I should go and work with him, because it's the same Joy Yerobe. He even said that he, she will never forgive me, Joy Yerobe, that she will never forgive me because I refuse to bow down to him, because it's the same Joy Yerobe. In Finland, she even like kneeling down, begging me, the same Joy Yerobe, what, Biafrans, what do you think would have happened? If I have go to Ngazi's, okay, Ngazi guys, these are people that, and the same people that are claiming that they made me A P M, who I am, whatever. When we, when we, when we find ourselves in a tough, uh, in a, in a, you know, a, a tough time or a serious challenge or had to bail out, what we need, how, you know, what we need to do to make sure we use event, why none of these people that make me A P M step up? And do what I did then, why none of them? You know, so sometime, uh, that's why I'm saying, if these people don't turn around and stop sabotaging what we are doing, the cost of, of the land, evil that they have caused, things that they have done, that have killed hundreds of thousands of Biafran, their blood will be on their head, they will never be forgiven, because some of them are doing what they are doing knowingly, not unknowingly. Whoever is doing what he's doing unknowingly might be forgiven, but those that are doing what they are doing knowingly, it will not be forgiven. There's too much lie, too many lies that have been said about me, that is not true and they know it's not true. Around January, there's something that happened, I, I was having discussion with Imam Madelaya Muhammad and Tambor, Chioma Bryson. And then, you know, we came to, uh, we are during our discussion, if something happened to me right now, or maybe I'm not available for a minute or hours, who we, who will run the show, two of them said they don't know anyone. So what changed? Just because of envy, jealousy? Just because I refuse to bow down to them, to their demand, because they want to make sure that they try to, they try to lead us and dump us somewhere that we cannot retreat or we cannot come out of. Let's just take the case study of what happened between them and the independent medias. When they campaign and champion the independent medias, that independent media would be their savior, they team up to fight against Brig. To bring, not to bring me down, to bring us down, we are at the independent media today. They brought Adonwu, that old fool, that turned to sabotage of this century. She had in Gazi Rabes, they put us in this mess with the crazy woman in France. They put us in this mess. They destroy a lot of Biafran's mind. And I don't know how they will reverse it. How do you think you would bring a woman that is not part of Brig, Adonwu, she's not part of Brig, to come and be in Brigia country? Who, who restated her? She's not even restated by the A P M, because as far as our Prime Minister is not here, I'm representing. So even if she's going to be restated, I suppose to, no, but C R C don't have the power, Adversity Committee don't have the power to restate Adonwu. And they might think, because he's C R C chairman, even in the zoo Nigeria, I next chairman can never be, uh, uh, they don't have the power over the, the presidency or they don't have the power to, to govern, they just have a limited power under the committee that they oversee, oversight. Now, this group colluded with the independent media about accountability. And they talk about opening a new account, doing this, doing that. So what is going on now, my fellow Biafrans, they are fighting again. The same people that even said, why I did not forgive, other the Ramon, when she asked for forgiveness. These people went back to their vomit, they are fighting within themselves because their foundation is built of falsely and falsehood. Their foundation is not built with truth, they lie and deceive thousands of Biafran. Please, if you're a Biafra and you are listening to me, this is time for all of us, please support this freedom, keep doing what you are doing when our leader Unyendu was here and when our Prime Minister, when he was here, in less than a few weeks, result, less than a few weeks, not after you now find that, oh, Mazyogichukunkere or Brig, they are, they are on the right side doing what is right, you will not turn around. So all this time that you have not been supporting, what do you think would have happened if all of us have stepped aside? That means we have given up like Wasuke, in less than a few weeks, we'll see the result. We know those that are sabotaging what we are doing and the genuine ones. When I call our Prime Minister, my boss, I don't understand, we have, we have a lot in common, we know how to speak our language, we know, I know what he know, he know what I know. We have the same ideology, we have the same goal, just like majority of the genuine people here and both those washing. If you look at the other side, they don't even know where to start from, to attack, I'm actually their topic, how many times have I made them my topic? Because as far as I'm concerned, they are not fighting for Biafra, they don't have anything to fight with. And I just want to use this opportunity as well to send a message to this other group using B R O G I E on their space, B R O G I E as where it's registered. The same way Biafra Republic government is registered. Some of them cannot even afford their rent, some are asylum seekers, begging for God mercy, for God to hear their prayer, for things to go well with them. If you know you want God to bless you and you want a Zel, you want to be fruitful, this is from evil way. Don't destroy him who do nothing wrong. It will help. And some people don't believe that what goes around comes around, whatever say you saw, that's what you will reap. All these people on this other side of the arm, car joy in me, all of them. I'm gonna lay a serious curse, my hands are clean, and God accrete the heaven and earth, know who I am, whatever I speak, he will support me. Edimo for Drago, this is from your evil way. All of you that have come to destroy this great cause, this is from your evil way, mark this date, write it down. If you keep fighting this great cause, fighting against the pioneers of this great cause, you and your generation will be cast. We are God people, we believe in things of the spirit, just like the Israelite do. Because according to the Bible that I read, God bless, you know, bless those that are doing his will and he cast those that are not doing what is right. So even if I cast evil people that have come to slander my name, destroy Brig, destroy what we are fighting for, that cause will work. Edimo for Drago, if you one of those from the other side of the space, that this other four, uh, uh, this other cool plotters are parading, using it to damage what we are doing, kindly, this is from me. Kindly this is from me, because time is coming. I mentioned somebody about a month ago called Ugo two four seven, I say Ugo two four seven, after all the propaganda, after all the blackmail against me, time is coming when, when he will look for me to ask for forgiveness. He better pray that I'll be available to forgive, if not, everything on this earth will work against him. If you know you are one of those with a fear and cool in that other part of the, uh, space, talking ill about the A P M, Mazyogichukunkere, this is from me, because now that we are fighting, it's not a good time, we are not in good mood to come do that. Don't say what you don't know. And a lot of this, Sabotwa, I always use the word that Mazyogichukunkere, want to hijack Brig. Ask them, from Imam Madu to Rubina the People's Club of Nigeria, when they talk about the Board of Directors, who even make them the Board of Directors? When I was filling the paperwork, none of them is there. They did not even know. None of them is even there, ask these fools, do they know how much we used to register Brig? Nobody, no, except from me. I'm just saying this now, nobody know how much we spent to register, whether I say that, none of them, they call me Arab boy. Yes, I am Arab man for Biafra, I'm working for Biafra, I'm a messenger of Biafra, I'm here to work to restore Biafra. If you don't like it, go to hell. Who among these fool will come and tell me, how much do we use to register Brig? Nobody know, except from me. Who among these fool even give me a dime to register it? I register with my money, do anybody ask, these fools that are saying, I'm here to hijack Brig? Some of them don't even contribute a dime. When we come for our weekly fundraising every Saturday, you don't see them. Those that are asking for accountability, what have you contributed, what have you done it? You asking me, you saying I'm here to hijack Brig, do you know how we register it? Are you there when the process is done? Is a Mamadu there? No. Is Rubina there? No. Who among them is there? Who know about it? Who register with me? I and our PM, we on the phone, we talk, and why I'm doing what I'm doing, the system gave you options, I choose the option, they did not choose it for me. Because it don't matter who is the director, it don't matter who is the secretary, it don't matter who is the resident agent, what matters is Biafra. Some say, at first, he's not there as director, who register, who put the names, people to be there, I did. That means if I don't want to put anyone name as of that time, I will not. And there is a time that every Biafra is scared to put their name in what we are doing, because they are scared that the Nigerian government might come after them. It's not like now that I have Ballamoros, not like now that we have, you know, we, we, uh, we are more stronger and formidable, there is a time. Some Biafrans, if you ask them to do it, they will say no, they will not, because some of them do travel to that shit hole country. Some don't want their name on it either. There is a time that if you ask a Biafra, get an office and hand the Biafra flag, they will say they cannot do it or they will not do it because they are afraid, I did it. When I get the office at Baltimore, I hang our flag, put my life, my family life, put everything on the line. Do you think the Nigerian government, they can do research about me and come after me? I understand as well that I'm putting myself in a high risk, but I took this risk for Biafra. Some of these fools that don't even know how we start, me and our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Eban, we don't care who is president, director, agent, this secretary, it don't matter. What matter is our freedom, what matter is result. I did not join this struggle for fame, I did not join this struggle for position, I did not join this struggle to be known. I joined this struggle because I want us to be free, because I've been in Western world almost all my life. I want a better life for Biafran people. I want us to be free, that is the reason why I joined this struggle. Finance Minister, I never asked for it, and for, let me use this opportunity to address Ngazi too. Ngazi Rabes, in her speech during her fundraising yesterday, she said she been in this struggle for four years, that's a lie. Even if she in this struggle for four years, four years ago, actually, two, I had two years ago, three years ago, she was campaigning for Ifanyoba. So she want to tell me why she is saying not hate Biafra and why we are saying no election in Biafran, Ngazi Rabes is campaigning for, uh, uh, Ifanyoba or Ifanyoba, she and Rubina. And she said four years ago, she been in this struggle, four years ago, she not, but when she joined this struggle, she is still campaigning in Nigeria. She is still part of Nigeria political party. Is she the one who will bring Biafra for you? Is she now the one who is genuine, while we are fighting, preaching, there is no election in Biafran? Ngazi Rabes and Rubina, they are kicking against us, they are campaigning for Nigerian political parties. Ngazi Rabes, you are a sabo, you are sent by Nigerian agent. And she went on to address the issue of, about Azoka and when Azoka had problem, our PM now said I should take over Finance Minister. That happened after the government is formed, it happened after like six or seven months, and before that, I'm already the Finance Minister. I'm Finance Minister starting from twenty twenty-three, March. By the issue or problem with Ngazi Rabes and Azoka, that was September, I'm already the Finance Minister. She just lied to use that to deceive her gullible ones, that our Prime Minister say, okay, uh, since Azoka is sacked, I should not be the Finance Minister, then Asurumon Okasha will be the Defense Minister, say who? That is not truth. I'm the Finance Minister from day one, when the government is formed, of which I'm part of those who form the government. Please, because of time and I know those from homeland, they are, they are using data, because they still live in a, we have hopefully get our country back in due time, they will be able to have unlimited data, just like the Western world, whereby you pay once a month and you have free unlimited data and order. I will be wrapping up, I just want to let my fellow Biafrans know, were you ready, Guizegion? Use your tongue, count your teeth, those that are fighting me, leave me alone. And for all the sabo, all the Sabotwa, I will deal with all of you, Brig will use me to deal with all of you. All of you must not go upon me. I said it last week, even if our Prime Minister come out and say forgive them, our leader Mazin Nndikan come and say forgive them, I will not forgive. Ndhatama, they have put me through hell, I know what I'm going through daily. I know what I'm going through daily, trying to make sure, trying to make sure that Briggy is standing. If we have followed Ngosie Orobese playbook, exactly what this fool color was wicked, that's what we have. Exactly what Alan Onyema did, when Alan was negotiating between Nigeria and, uh, Niger Delta Avengers. That is the playbook of Ngosie Orobese. If we follow what Imam Madu, at the Tomboy, Chairman Bryson and her group. That is exactly by now, everything will collapse. When we told them that the independent medias, they are not fighting for the interest of Biafra. They did not listen to us. The independent medias are the same people that try to destroy Briggy. They are the same people that discourage a lot of Biafrans from evil supporting. They are the same people that talk about they should go and open a new account. They are the same people that said, let's support, uh, with, I don't know, they will be able to do this or do that. Please, if you are a true Biafra, remain where you are. Be a true fool to yourself. But all those that have made Marzogu, you can carry their topic. The air you breathe will walk against you. The water you drink will turn to poison. Every nation, everything in this earth will walk against you. Whoever they have come to destroy our freedom. This world, the everything that you love so much, will turn to pain and agony. Some of you are so evil, after seeing what is happening in Biafra land, how the Nigerian terrorists, how they are killing Biafrans. You are turn blind eye. Still fighting those that are working hard day and night to save Biafra life. What you don't know, don't talk about it. What you not sure of, ask question. But all of you that are going to space, calling my name, making me your topic. Joy will not come from your household. All of you that are destroying the name of this humble servant of Biafra. Knowingly, not unknowingly, knowingly, your household, your family, agony, sorrow, pain, will be your portion. What you don't know, ask question. Call me, ask me question, let me clarify. We are not here to look anyone face. We have suffered. Biafrans have been killed a million. We are struggling every day, doing whatever we can to make sure that our land is not overrun. While you have some, some people, their job is hard to destroy everything we are working for. I will mention some name. Effe, I heard you, I heard yesterday on your space. You will suffer. All of you that have colluded and lie against me, hell in Peter. Pain will be your portion. You will look for me to ask for forgiveness. Asa, all of you will suffer, rough. You will not see joy in your life. Fighting for our freedom is not a joke. We are not here for political correctness. When it's time for political correctness, we will do that. All those that have slander my name, all those that have carjourn or stop Biafra people for supporting their freedom. Knowingly, not unknowingly, knowingly, it will never be well with all of you. Next month, we'll be storming Washington DC. We'll be having meetings, a lot will happen next month. I'm just want to let Biafrans know, a lot, a lot of progress is going on. And Ngosie Orobese, stop deceiving Biafrans. When you were thinking you are working with our BDF, you are not working with them. I know everything that is going on. Whatever they even try to do, the money that Biafrans are contributing to you, they trying to even get it from you. You are never with, they're never with you. Because they believe that any money that you scam Biafrans, it's Biafra money. Any trick, anyhow, they can get it from you, yeah, whatever they do, I don't blame them. And for Ralph and the group, everything that is going on, I'm a, I know better. Any dime that you guys collect from Biafrans, they will still try getting it out from you guys, by the way. Very soon, result got off, in few weeks from now. Result. Please, I wish I can still continue, I know he's back in Biafra land. Please, all those that said, I'm here to hijack Briggy. Ask them, when, when, uh, when Briggy was registered, how many of them is there present, by the way? How many of them know about it? How many of them even contribute a dime? A dime, just one dime, not two. How many of them know how much? How many of them know how much? How many contribute or contributed? When we were facing the name of who gonna be in any board, who and who is there? And when I went back on July thirty first to make changes, I did what I did to prevent the evil ones to go and, uh, destroy Briggy or do the same nonsense they have been doing. Go to our website, our website have been altered. Both is I sign for before we posted on the website, they have altered and take everything up. They have destroyed the former website. They have destroyed the former, of which even if our PM is out back, we still get our website back. But they have made that website, uh, I don't know how I'm gonna describe it, but they have destroyed our website. Even I myself will not even allow them put my picture back there. They have destroyed our website. Ask them, do they know how we register it? How many of them we are there? How many of them know how much? We use. How many of them tell me, put this one as director, put that one as secretary, none of them. None of them. I'm part of the foundation and God have used me. And God will keep using me. If you like jealous from today to tomorrow, I am Briggy and Briggy is me. I am Biafra, Biafra is me. We are all Briggy. We are all Biafrans. You know why they are fighting me, they are just too jealous. They are, they were like, why am I in center of everything? Because God know those that are genuine. God know him, who he choose. If God don't choose you, pack. Imam Madu, why not Imam declare himself as the APM, he a boom of the other side? Briggy is us, all of us here, we are Briggy. Whether they like it or not. Uh, my fellow Biafrans, don't you know it because of jealousy? Chama, the tomboy woman, she was said, oh, I'm the one going to Washington DC to meet Congress. It's supposed to be your husband, uh, Bryson, uh, supposed to be your husband. At the time when we were asking him, this useless man, serve central man, if he will be, uh, the Foreign Affairs Minister. He said, no, he always pretend like he don't want to. Uh, they are, they are, he always pretend, no, I mean, at the end, that's what he wants. Him and his wife is so con, very conny people. Those people, this guy professors, educated fools. My fellow Biafra, just in few weeks, will be smiling, smiling like never before. Our prime minister, in few weeks, I believe he will be out and we will start the journey. We'll be doing, how we be doing. And for them that think, oh, when he come out, I'm not gonna give him back the, uh, prime. I never even need it. I don't even want it. But the Biafra people, they look at me and they believe I can handle it. I have no choice. As a messenger, as Aram boy, as Aram man, they ask question. Who shall I send? Biafrans, Biafrans ask question. And who will go for Biafra? And I said, Biafra, here I am, send me. And the Biafrans, and Biafra decide to send me. I have no choice. I cannot run away from this, I cannot shy away from it. I'm already in and I will be in this struggle until our land is totally liberated. When I look at my right and look at my left, back and front, I see sabotwa, sabo people everywhere. Do you want me to leave this movement for sabo? That means everything we be working for will vanish in a twinkle blink of eye. I don't think we want to let that happen. Please, send this message to those fools that think they are space to expose me, expose who? Who are you exposing? Are you exposing him that God have chosen or him that Biafra people have chosen? Him that is here from day one? What are you to expose me about? When I was there doing plus and minus on the phone with our prime minister, are you there? When we were putting things together, are you there? When we had meeting with the other former republic that was working, they said they are Republic of Biafra in Azar, that was working with Nigerian government, when we have series of meeting with them, are you there? When I was fighting those people, are you there? Are you in that meeting? When I was putting pressure on our prime minister, said, prime minister, we have to form our government, are you there? I'm behind him pushing pressure, not Imam Madu, not Ruby, not Ngosie, I on the phone with our prime minister. Said, we have to do this. Where I form, I was there campaigning that we try to work with the other sabo group called Republic of whatever. I get on the phone with our prime minister, say, PM, I get, we have to form our government, yes. And we start the process. Are all those Nick and Pus there? Then now they will go to space and be talking about. Some of these people that are talking evil about me, if you ask them to use their name to register anything Biafra, they won't, because they will believe that the Nigerian terrorist government will come after them. I did. I bring myself as a sacrificial lamb, I don't care what comes. Either I live or die, it don't matter, but I will keep fighting for Biafra. Because nothing more greater or beautiful than freedom. We must be free. Please, send message to those people on space, talking about me, what they don't know, they have to stop. Whatever happened on July thirty seven, on July, uh, uh, thirty first, I did that for reason. To lock, to lock Briggy very good, because I find out that you have some evil element that don't even supposed to be there. Ruby Nadi don't even supposed to be there in our bylaw. In our bylaw made it clear that anyone that have associated, is served or associate is served with the Nigerian politics or Nigerian organization cannot serve in Briggy government. Why Ruby Nadi, she is People's Club of Nigeria, so automatically she is disqualified. She don't even supposed to be in the cabinet at first. She don't even supposed to be in our article. I have to get it, take this, kick her out of it. Is he a Mamad Abum, lying Mohammed, the Mamad Abum that lie too much? Don't even supposed to be there, I have to kick your head out, kick him out. I'm doing everything to preserve Briggy, so they cannot penetrate. Let them come and penetrate now, we'll see. Briggy, we totally give us our freedom and that must happen, and it's happening. Ask those fools, let them go to Washington DC, let them make book appointment. Ask Ngosie Orobese, since January, how many congressmen and women she have have meeting, no me. Go to Georgia, she have have meeting with one or two of her local district, uh, uh, congressman in state level. Ask her to go to Washington and go and have meeting. Please, Ngosie Orobese, you better stop what you are doing, you know you are deceiving our people. You have to stop, because you will pay. You remember, we still have unfinished business. That business is giving you a sleepless night. The time is ticking, time is running out, you have limited time. You ask for time, they should give you time to do what, you know what I'm talking about? Please, cut this part to Ngosie. Ngosie Orobese, time is ticking, you have few more time. Okay? Disease from your evil way, that evil woman, Ngosie. And the Mamad and group, we have given you guys enough time, it's over one, two months now, your own, very soon. Uno, I got a few not telling more than Ngosie, Mathioma. You and, uh, uh, I know, the man group already, they already have their lawyer. I just want to let Biafrans know, Imam Madu is the head of the other group and he's denying it. They already consulted lawyer, they better go and get a good lawyer, because don't get a local lawyer, I'm a boy. Go and get the best lawyer, because, uh, even if our PM is out, I, I got, I got, I can, this is time, we are cleaning the house. Over twenty years, you guys took us for right. Marzim Namdi can, they not take this action we are taking now. Our PM, you know, trying to preserve and trying to make sure that everything, nothing, uh, you know, you know, we don't gonna crash on the, on our way. So he allow a lot of things to fly, but it will not happen again. Even if our PM is out, you guys can go and cry to our PM from today to tomorrow. Yes, you, all of you, we pay the damage, everything. All the pain you all put us through, all the pain Imam Madu, all of you. Both those that live anywhere they are, they will be served. They put us through hell. They try to destroy what we are doing, if not because we are strong. It's not, not because some of us say no. I know what I'm talking about. I know what I'm going through. Physically, spiritually, financially, ndhatana man, and I will support all of you back. As long as I'm working for Biafra, I'm representing Biafra. I know what I'm doing is right for Biafra, all of you will be heard, I can tell. Sam, Dr. Sam, I did expect you go through this round. But we are all here in America, we'll see who laugh last. All of you prepare. And for Ralph, that live in Italy, a poor, riched man that will even have to buy diaper. So he do, he don't make mess or poor himself. Who live in his kitchen, use his kitchen to do broadcast, in a, my, I can. Ralph, don't think you are untouchable and you are reachable in that you're Italy. And for all those that are saying Imam Madu, Siarosi, you sue me, hurry up. Today, tomorrow, ne, ne, sue you, who? Briggy, the telephone, I'm Briggy. Hey, my cat, you know the other one. Bring it on. But the good thing is that God have used me to preserve Briggy from destruction. The Biafra people have used me because I am Aram boy for Biafra. I am a messenger for Biafra. They have used me to make sure that Ngosie Orobese did not succeed. The Biafra people have used me to make sure that the Mamad and group did not succeed. Just to bring me down to nothing. They say the work of resident agent is just to receive mail and, yes, let it be, I'm just receiving mail. The same way I'm Aram boy, that get this office out. The same way I'm Aram boy that going to Washington DC. The same Aram boy that help to make sure we get roof over our head in Hesin K. I am proud Aram boy for Biafra. I am proud Aram boy or Aram man for Biafra. I will keep being Aram man, Aram boy for Biafra, until I die. Please, fellow Biafrans, I love you all, keep doing what you are doing. There is serious war going on in Biafra land. The Nigerian government, they have come to kill us, them and the Fulani has men. Please, fund your freedom. America will not come and fund your freedom for you. They can understand about you when they see how serious you are. Russia will not come to bail your ass. They have their own problem. We saw what happened two days ago. There is a summit between US president and the Russian president. What is that summit for? Is to bring peace. Is to see if there's anyhow Russia and Ukraine can come to negotiate, uh, negotiate table so that they can agree or disagree. They have their own problem to face. They have their own problem to solve. Our problem as Biafrans is to fund our freedom. Is to kick the terrorists out of our land. If we don't do it, no one will do it for us. And for those Biafrans that don't want to be smart and do the right thing, follow Hunoroute. Those that are still listening to the independent media, the faceless people that have destroyed what we are doing or trying to, stop listening to them. And those that are following Ngosie Orobese, disease, yes, there's nothing there. Please, I plead, I beg every Biafra, disease from your evil way. Stop trying to destroy this movement. And for those that have made me their topic from morning to night, even in your dream, that topic will turn to nightmare. Anything you do, it will walk against you. Go and ask your shit, go and ask your god, who is Marzogu, I'm a fearless human being. I know what I believe in, I know who I am. If what I'm doing is wrong, if I'm not genuinely fighting for Biafra freedom, let God cut my life short, let God take my life. Let me not see tomorrow, not even tomorrow. Let me not see the next minute. But if I'm pure, genuine, all you evil sabotwa that never want Biafra to totally be restored or liberated. Everything you lay your hand on, I will repeat it again, you will not succeed. Pain will visit you and your household. You have a sleepless nightmare. Water will turn to acid, poison. Yeah, the time in your life, you will go from synagogue to synagogue, from church to church. Yeah, the time in your life, you will go from synagogue to synagogue, from church to church, from pastor to pastor. You'll be trying to find out the cause of your problem. If the land of Biafra don't forgive you, you know you will find yourself in a mess. Thank you all from here. In few weeks, we have great news coming from Washington DC. Please, uh, Biafra is here. We are working hard. We are working very, very hard to see that the United States of America recognize Biafra. We have present our case to them. We have had meeting with, uh, a lot of congressmen and women, and we are working very hard to make sure that we block the answer. Nigeria, we use this to know that Biafra is here. And as far as that shit to Nigeria, we need to do everything we can to burn it down. It's a dream killer, a country that is killing Biafrans in thousands, millions, and they don't care. Thank you all. And for people who are for Ludo, sorry that I, uh, you know, I take too much time. I know some are already sleeping. Thank you all. I appreciate everyone. Ndewo.